Our workshop for December 5th, 2017. Under Administrative Matters, I just need to announce that we will be having two closed sessions this evening, one about real property and the other one about an agreement that was signed a few years back and so the legal ramifications of that.
Are they together before or split?
They're going to be split, I'm pretty sure. It depends on time. And there are some adjustments. I passed a paper around, it's a correction to the minutes. On page 11, there's a minutes, which is what this is, is there was a minutes correction. So that's coming around. And I think that is it for what I have for administrative announcements. Are there any other announcements from anyone else? You're missing, you're missing someone. Oh, she said she was going to be late.
Do you want to notify them about these changes?
Oh, yes, thank you. That's why. Okay, I do have another administrative announcement. There will be a change this evening in our agenda. Ms. Manning has asked that I move item from consensus, item 12B under consensus, to action. And we will have, we will move that to action so that she can have a discussion on that. And also, item 12D3, which is Policy 4-43, under Personnel Protection from Sexual Harassment, that is being pulled from tonight's agenda and is going back to the Policy Committee for more, another review. And the deferred comp briefing.
Joint briefing of the city and board on December 12th.
Okay, so we will have that on December 12th, a joint briefing with City Council at 3:00.
That's Building 19, Rooms A and B.
Same place we do the five-year forecast.
Okay. Ms. Weems.
Yes. I know there's going to be a meeting about the Achievable Dreams in Lynn Haven Middle. Is it Thursday?
The 7th.
The 7th. Yeah, I've got conflict that night, so can we get?
There's a second one in January.
We're going to have a closed session this evening that is going to deal a little bit with that.
Send you the presentation as well.
Yeah, that's what I want, the presentation, because I've been getting a lot of questions about that.
Yep.
And also, Ms. Anderson and Dr. Spence, can we have some conversation either in workshop or if you just want to do an email or briefly about the cameras and the cameras on the stop arms for the arrogant and civet leave, their concerns, because I know there's a couple of divisions that have that and I'm still getting questions about that. So if we could just kind of put it on.
Is that budget, would you say that comes under budget? Can you bring that up under budget this evening?
Yeah, I mean, we could, yeah. I just want to have a conversation.
It has a budget impact.
Yeah, it's a conversation that has to take.
It does have a budget impact, so.
Right, right. And I know Dr. Spence is aware of it and has emailed me, but I just wanted all the colleagues to be aware that we've been talking about that, some safety issues with cars running, stop arms, stop signs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments under Admin Matters? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll move on to the next thing on our workshop. That would be B, Annual Recruitment Staffing and Retention and Compensation Update.
This is a pretty lengthy annual presentation, as you all know. I'm going to just turn it right over to Anne Glenn Zelsneck, she's going to start. Judy Wood and I will come in and do some parts of this also. Take it away, Anne.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
This afternoon, we're going to begin our presentation in reviewing the market conditions here in Virginia Beach, as well as nationally and in the state, the results of our work and the strategies we've implemented over the past year. Anne Judy Wood will be speaking about compensation and Mr. Mira will be discussing compression later on in the presentation. As always, our work in the Human Resources Office is embedded in our strategic plan, specifically Goal 4, we're looking at placing a premium on recruiting, hiring and retaining high-quality staff in all of our positions in the division. So when taking a closer look at the challenges we have here in Virginia Beach, we in particular note that we have some, we have a variety of those, and include new allocations, promotions, voluntary transfers, as well as late retirements and resignations. So after July 1st, we had 268 vacancies. When looking at that vacancy number, it is imperative to, although small, it does have an impact overall when we're hiring teachers and looking at the diversity of teachers hired over each week in the summer. So you can note that we hired 66% of our minority teachers by June 29th. So the allocation that we receive early help us to hire and reach out to those teachers very early in the summer. But as we go along through the weeks to the end of September, we can see those numbers decline. So it is important for us to reach out to teachers from all over, including our local divisions that are nearby us, because their contracts, they have to commit to, some of them, by June 30th and also July 15th. So our ability to reach out and retain additional teachers is important. So those allocations are crucial for our recruitment fees. So we've looked a little bit at Virginia Beach, let's take a look at the national and state conditions. So if your students choosing teaching as a career, this directly impacts the number of students being enrolled in those teacher preparation programs, thereby impacting the number of minority applicants also involved in those teacher preparation programs. Then that continues on to impact the overall students, the critical shortage areas of special education, math, technology education, and world languages, because again, those enrollment numbers are going down. So now you can see the university programs are adjusting their programs to meet those modifications to those enrollment numbers. And so they're trying to reach out and come up with other creative ideas to continue to build those teachers careers, teachers' careers in education. So what we're seeing around the country and in our state is that the teacher shortage is real. And we felt it just a little bit this summer when we were trying to locate social studies and English teachers, which are not in our critical shortage area, but we nonetheless struggled this summer just a bit to obtain those teachers at the secondary level. When looking at the national enrollment and teacher preparation programs, we're noting that those numbers are declining. Since 2008 to 2014, those numbers have declined by 250,000 students. When looking at student enrollment, K to 12, we've seen the enrollment increase of, by a million students. When looking at the state level and looking at the diversity of teachers enrolled in teacher preparation programs and the diversity of those programs, we can see that the two-year college, four-year public institutions, and four-year private institutions, the diversity level is low. Even when looking at that four-year public institution, we have the highest number of students enrolled in that program, yet our numbers still remain low as far as diversity across each of those institutions. So we've taken a look at our results locally, our challenges locally in the state and nationally. So let's take a little bit of a closer look at our results here in Virginia Beach. And I just want to point out that these are all new teachers to Virginia Beach. They are participating in our taught, their teacher orientation program in the fall. So we have 627 new teachers hired for the school year this year. And 21% of those teachers overall were minority teachers. And again, you can see our breakdown here on the right. When looking at our minority recruitment success since 2014, looking at the overall numbers, starting in 2014 at 14.7%, we have an overall increase of 50%. When looking at teachers from other divisions who decided to come here and join our team, we had 217 teachers with experience in other divisions join us. 91 of them came from the Hampton Roads area. We also taking a little bit of a look at the diversity of newly hired and promoted administrators here in Virginia Beach. So starting in July of 2017 to November of 2017, we had a total of 32 administrators hired and 28.281% were minority. So why do applicants select to come to Virginia Beach and make it their professional home? Well, we survey all new employees at our onboarding every week, and they get a chance to tell us all the reasons why they said they want to make Virginia Beach City Public Schools their professional home. So they have an opportunity to make more than one selection. So when we reviewed that information, we noted that the top four reasons still remain that they live in Virginia Beach, they have family and friends who work in Virginia Beach, they live close to Virginia Beach, and ultimately, our reputation speaks for itself, which is outstanding. In addition to that, we have former substitutes and student teachers and practicum students and other students who do their administrative internships with us, who say, "I want to come back and make this my professional home." So how did we get this far? It's the strategies and events that we've implemented that have helped us to get to the place we are today. So when looking at our strategies in the fall, we spent time focused, spent time at our historically black colleges and universities, Norfolk State, Virginia Union, career fairs, as well as military-oriented fairs. And of course, our VTFT Symposium, Virginia Teachers Future, Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow In the wintertime, we spent time, for the first time, attending the VEA Teachers of Color Summit. This was the first time this took place in Richmond, and we had an opportunity to speak to students as well as hear from presidents from historically black colleges and universities as well. We also spent time right here in our own home, in our own backyard, supporting our students at their career fairs, at the Technical Career Education Center and Lansdowne High We again, in the wintertime, attended additional minority fairs, specifically reached out to Hampton, Deep Howard University in Washington DC. And we also, for the first time, participated in a virtual career fair through Education Week, Top Jobs. This was an opportunity for us to kind of work in conjunction with that company, with a platform where applicants who are interested in our division got to speak to our staff through a virtual chat room. So we got to see their information, and then we could speak a little bit about what we did here in Virginia Beach and provide information about our application and hiring process. We also have our annual, we have a twice a year, once each semester, our student teacher reception and principal panel. Again, we invite all the local universities to come, as well as other universities to come to our evening panel and meet with our hiring specialists, as well as hear from principals and have an opportunity to ask questions about our division. And finally, we have our Career Expo we held that was hosted at Green Run High School, and we thank all the school board members and administrators who were able to attend that event. It was very successful, it had over 1,700 registered applicants to come to that fair, and we will have it again April 21st. I look forward to seeing it. It will be hosted by Lansdowne High School this time, at a green button. But we're very excited about that event, it was a wonderful turnout, and we had some really great candidates that we were able to pick out from that event. So what is in the pipeline? We're going to continue to beef up our social media campaigns, utilizing Facebook, and of course, we already have our Twitter page, and expand our commitments, incentives to special education positions, as well as expand our digital interview process. We are also using our electronic forms, which has been very successful in our new hiring process. It really has expedited that process and helping us hire new staff. And then we also have the Early Notification of Resignation Incentive Program, where we had 171 employees take advantage of that incentive. And then, of course, we again, really would like to continue our early release of allocation. It really helps us to be able to staff our schools early. And one of our most exciting programs coming forth is our Retirement Opportunity Program. So this is a place where we can house a, develop a webpage, a newsletter, and points of contact for our retirees, because the wealth of knowledge that is in our division as we move forward is sort of saying, walking away, and we want it to come back. And I think that we also are noting that people want to come back and provide that support and that mentorship and that community for our schools and our division. With that being said, we're looking at our succession plan. So employee, looking at this chart right here, we have employees, employee groups in the left, and these are employees with 30 years of VRS eligible years or so. Keep in mind, this does not mean they don't have service years outside of our division or with other agencies. So when looking at the employee groups, they're the names, these are the number of employees in that group, and then the ones who are eligible to retire at the end of the 2018 school year. When looking at that information, our top, our top five coordinators and principals at Professionals, we're talking about technology, budget, procurement, two types of positions, at 22%. Directors at 39%. And executives at 46%. So you can see why our Retirement Opportunity Program is going to be very valuable to us, because it's only going to support our schools and ultimately, our division. So this time, I'd like to invite Judy Wood to come up and continue our presentation.
Do you all prefer to hold questions, or do you have questions on the recruitment piece that Anne just did? We could do that at your pleasure.
How do you want to do it? I have a question.
Questions now.
Go ahead, because it's probably fresh within that category now. Questions now on that, Ms. McLeod.
My question is regarding the vacancies and the 268 who didn't tell us until after July 1st. Did you do some surveying as to asking them why they didn't tell us prior? We did, we contacted, well, some of them, we contacted some of them, called back. So some of them was relocation. Relocation because of military orders. Some did take positions in other divisions, either because it was closer to where their home was. So we, I think two in particular recall that lived in York, some lived in Chesapeake. So most of us relocation. Okay. The retirements and resignations, we typically, they just, they didn't take advantage of the incentive, or they thought about it, hey, you know, I figured out, maybe this is not the best. Do you have a breakdown of the vacant, of the 268 vacancies and how many were, those 268 specifically, how many were relocation, how many were retirement? We do. Is that something you could send later? Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Weems.
Can you expand on additional incentives that we're going to offer, like special education teachers?
So we have incentive, we do early commitments, which are just, we have these great student teachers that are out here and our principals call us and say, "Oh my goodness, this person is outstanding." So that's one piece, but they're not necessarily obtaining incentive with that. The incentive is that they get an early commitment, and they were saying, "We want you for the, yes, we want you for the next school year." So that's one piece. And then, we were looking at how we could support some of our schools, especially that little bit more challenging difficulty getting the teachers at the schools, providing that incentive to them, especially in the areas of math, which is just really tricky. Math and that technology education is really tricky. So we're, we have two principals who really work with us, who recruit for us and attend Perk, which is in Pennsylvania, and so we were able to get some really solid technology education teachers early. But they have to move here, and we're coaching them, and we're talking to them, so that incentive is a nice little piece. So it's particularly, we were focusing on math and technology education last year. This year, we decided that, we're talking with our staffing specialists, that we needed to broaden that a little bit, because special education is also an area where we have to try to provide, again, just a little bit of an incentive. It's not a huge pocket of money, but we are using what we can to diversify that and spread it out a little bit, a little bit more, since our math is, kind of played around with the numbers a little bit as they went throughout the year. And we just keep track of it as they come in, because different staffing specialists are hiring for different schools and they have different needs, and that happens with retirements, people leaving, and we don't always know at that very moment whether you're either Teacher A or School A, and you need 10 and you need one.
So are you saying there's money incentive?
Yeah.
And so you don't, is each, I mean, is it a set amount?
It is a set amount.
So how much is it?
This year, it is, I have to get back to my numbers.
It is, and it's also.
Totally.
Thanks. It's also for, specifically for Support 3 and Support 4 schools. So if the, if the early commitment teacher accepts a placement at one of those schools, as long as we have funds still available, then there's an incentive tied to it. And for Tech Ed and Math, we landed on...
It was 2,500.
2,500 for them, 1,000 for the special.
Is that upfront, you had a lump sum?
Yes.
But it's, it's not until after they had worked with.
After they started working.
First of October is my.
In October.
Oh, okay, good, good time to get it to, okay. Mr. Edwards.
Trent, is the late notification getting worse? Or is it, it's been a problem, I know, but is it getting worse despite our incentives to?
No.
It's, so it's, it's just a continuing problem?
It's a, I mean, I, from what we, and I get on one year one, in this, in this position, from what I'm reading and hearing, we're talking, I think that people have these decisions where it's number one, they aren't moving, but.
So, sorry, not all those vacancies that occurred after two, after July 1 were necessarily because of resignations or retirements. Some of those vacancies occurred because of promotions or additional allocations that were granted after July 1st, and then there were some also, some movement transfers and those kinds of things. So it's not just, and, and the early notification really did actually help us this year that we did, because we got lots of vacancies, I mean, we've got lots of resignations early in the season. So by, you know, March, April, we already knew about vacancies, and we could actually start placing those in, excuse me, the priority transfers quickly, which then opened up the floor for us to be able to start hiring from the outside much sooner than we have in other years. Trend data on number of teachers, 627 seems a little higher than normal, is that trending up? It's a little bit, it's a few less than it was last summer, the previous summer. Okay, good, that's good. I think maybe 15 or so.
Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Recognizing the value in having a faculty population that's demographically more lined up with our student population, I think it's very telling of the efforts that you all have made, that our minority recruitment numbers outpace the numbers of students enrolling and graduating from teacher preparedness programs. So I think that's something that we can all be proud of, that we're, I think, moving in the right direction on that. And then just the overall, in terms of overall numbers, that's increasing too. So I just wanted to give off some kudos for that work.
Ms. Felton.
Thank you. Anne, I'd just like to say, presentation well, well done. It is good to see that we're moving out demographically with the hiring of minorities. And I'd like to say that I have attended every job fair that you've had, some of it tall, and it's massive. And I'd just like to give you your kudos on it as well, how organized that it is and how well it's taking place and the, and the vast, it's a massive of people that come. So my question to you, that you're reaching out to the different entities, especially the Teachers of Color Summit, I attended it, I attended that as well, and I was given a lot of information about being able to get here. That now, you're making an effort to get to them. Are they trying, do you see them reaching back to you as well? Is that trend coming back, reaching back now, that they see that you're coming?
Right, I think so. We are, like, I went to Virginia Union University, so it was nice to go there, just because we were able to talk, I was able to talk to a couple of students who weren't typically career, because it was a career fair. But in particular, there were some students in business, and so we were able to reach out to them, provide them information about our internship, our summer audit internship. So sometimes attending not just the teacher fairs, it's some of the school colleges just have a generic career fair. So that, that does provide us with a little bit of a different caveat of getting people to kind of take interest and look at it. So those, although I didn't have a lot of teachers, I had these, these business kids that came up and were like, "Oh, I didn't know you guys did that." So we made a different connection with our business office in getting them information about the audit, the summer audit process, where they can apply for that. So it is kind of broadening our scope.
Thank you, thank you. I want, we need to move on, because we do have something that we have to get to before the formal meeting tonight.
Good evening. As Anne mentioned, the staffing, the recruiting staffing and retention process is one that involves hiring that employee. So in order to get that employee to come to Virginia Beach, we actually look at how much can we offer them, that's what they're looking to look, asking for. So as part of my, this part of this presentation, we're going to look at some of our compensation programs as it relates to our instructional pay scale. Mr. Mira is going to come forth and talk a little bit about salary compression. Then we'll move forward to balances and additional duty supplements, our unified equity adjustments in our favor. And then we will also look at our teacher assistant and substitute, it is, substitute teacher pay as it relates to where we stand in the market. We'll then move on to look at some of our, what our employees are expected to pay for their premium healthcare costs going into 2018. And then, of course, we follow up with a few budget considerations. Now, in any organization, as you well know, compensation and benefits is one of the largest line items in the budgets. And as good stewards of public funds, we must work to ensure that we are able to compensate our employees in a fair and equitable manner by paying attention to our bottom line. And we're very fortunate that we have a school board compensation philosophy that allows us to do that. This document helps to guide us in how we are to structure our programs and administer compensation. And looking at our compensation philosophy, we will be referring to it throughout tonight's We want to look at Compass to 2020, Goal 4. As Anne mentioned, it is part of where most of our Department of Human Resources work is held. Strategy one actually speaks to us providing a competitive compensation and benefits program that enables us to attract and retain a highly qualified workforce. Further, it states that we will continue to address unified equity issues on the unified pay scale. Under our compensation philosophy, you can see it here, it says that our total compensation program will align with the division's overall strategic goals and objectives. So there is a little bit of alignment there. When it speaks to being competitive, the next four points tells us that we want to strive to provide a total compensation program that is world-class among all K through 12 institutions. We want to be economically competitive with institutions in southeastern Virginia. It also provides a little bit of guidelines in relation to how we are to conduct our surveys. And finally, it tells us that we want our pay ranges for instructional employees to be reviewed annually, and we do this every single year. So in looking at our instructional pay scale, we have an experience-based step pay scale. And what that means, employees are placed on our scale for year-to-year experience. So if you have 30 years of experience, we're going to place you with other employees with 30 years of experience. Currently, a new employee to our school division with zero years of experience can expect to make $44,796, and a employee with 38-plus years of experience can make $77,809. So in looking at how we compare in the market, each year, we participate in a statewide survey that allows us to review our standings in the market in five-year increments with other school divisions. This is statewide, but for the purpose of this presentation, we're going to focus on our local school divisions. We also are going to provide the 1617 standings for our school division, so you can see where we stood last year compared to this year. So at the zero to five-year mark, you can see that we still maintain our number one ranking in the market. However, at the 10 to 30-year mark, we did drop a little bit in the rankings. We went from five, three, excuse me, three to five, and then otherwise, we went from two, from number one to number two. And I want to tell you that part of the reason that we dropped in the rankings is that public schools implemented a new teacher scale this year, and it is a year scale, however, it's only for their new hires only. So if you are new to the school division, you are placed on that scale. However, if you're an existing employee, you are placed on this scale and moved closest to the step that related to your current salary. So what that means is, is that basically, there might be a step where an employee has various years of experience, but there'd be many employees with various years of experience on that one step, which we term compression. And speaking of salary compression... And speaking of salary compression, Mr. Mayor is going to come forth and talk to you.
Well, the, the other thing is what, what they created, you missed it, is having teachers, they started, they are creating what we just fixed with our teacher scale. Having, uh, new teachers come in and be put over the top of teachers with, uh, with more experience, which is good for us. I won't. Okay, so.
I was like that.
They, they want me to stand.
No.
Yeah, I know, but my guys wanted me to stand between that for some reason. Okay, so, uh, the reason, the reason I'm up here is at the school board retreat this past summer, um, it came up, you know, where do you want us to go and what do you want us to look at? And some concerns came up about the salary scale, in particular the teacher salary scale. And then somebody, whoever it was, mentioned, um, maybe we need a compensation study. And then I got up and did a quick talk. This is a follow-up to that. We know exactly what issues we have with the compensation, with our compensation program ultimately, with the scales and, and the other pieces Judy will cover later. However, without a, a fixed regular, uh, uh, revenue stream, we've been able to, uh, piecemeal some of this, like the, uh, unify that we've done over the years. Um, and so I'm going to go through a little bit, um, the other part that came up was, um, was talking about why can't we go back to step scale? And I said, we have a step scale. We have a step scale based on experience. So what, what I have here is an example of, it's a sample of what, uh, the division used back in the eighties. I'm going to tell you right now, there was no O, I don't know why there wasn't an O, but I'm going to say that right at the outset. So ultimately, what we're going to focus on here is making sure you understand the step scale, A through P, um, had two and a half percent between each step. Okay, that's step scale. Every time you move from A to B or B to C, you're given two and a half percent. And for this, uh, discussion, I want you to focus, just to help you understand what compression is. Let's just say this year that, back in the eighties or whatever it was, early eighties, late eighties, a first-year no experience teacher was on A. And a teacher who has one year already completed was on B. All right, so if you get that, and I'm going to show you the scenarios the school board has in giving raises, some, some of what they've done in the past for, are some options. The first one is to give everybody a step, and this is, was done in the past. So if everybody gets a step, notice that A, B, C all across stays exactly the same. Everybody who's, um, eligible for a step gets a two and a half percent step, but this person or these people on P didn't get anything. They stayed, the top was the top. That happened at times. The other option is giving the COLA, a cost of living adjustment, and for this, uh, example, I'm going to say a one percent. So all you do is you increase every step one percent. Now, everybody gets a one percent, including the P. However, what happens is no one moves a step. Remember, you only get a COLA. So now that brand-new teacher coming in and that teacher that just finished a year, now they're on the same step, they're on A. That's compression. So, uh, there's no magic bullet. I mean, e- every salary scale has the same problems when there's no money, um, or little. The other option is to give a, uh, is to give a, a COLA and a step. So again, the first thing you do, you increase every step one percent, that's the COLA. Everybody eligible gets a step and the person at the top gets the COLA, the one percent. These guys all get three and a half, this person got one percent. Any questions on that? Okay, so now I'm going to move into where we are now, our current, uh, situation. So here's last year's teacher's salary scale, and it's the first half because it goes up quite a ways. Left side is every year for year, it's a step, year for year. Teach, it says credible teaching, zero, one. So back in oh-six, the school board spent fourteen and a half million dollars to fix what was in place at the time. So everybody has seventeen years getting the same amount. So when we were looking at this year and, uh, we were able to have a two percent, uh, I already said that everybody moves year for year, and I'll explain a little more about that later. So how did we create this year's salary scale that we're in? Ultimately, what we do is we increase this brand-new person with zero, they get a year, that number there is increased by two percent and that becomes the new one. Uh, one becomes two, we just increased them all two percent. Okay, you with me there? So to alleviate compression starting at the entry level, but to stay competitive locally, we only increased the entry level for brand-new people one point, uh, seven-five percent. It's very small. So there's still compression, but it's not exactly the same. So it's very slight changes. Okay, so I, what I'd like you to do is if you don't, if you have a question about, ask me as we go along. Okay. So, um, here's the top of the scale now. Again, what we did last year, what we did is we gave everybody two percent. So we took this top of scale, which is ultimately thirty-seven plus years, and we added two percent and we called out the top of the scale, which is now thirty-eight plus, seventy-seven. And then we did the same thing again, right across the board. Now, if we didn't add that step, here's, here's what would happen. If we just said top of scale and we give the top of scale, stays top scale, two percent, that's fine for those folks. These people moving from thirty-six to top of scale would get three point three seven. Now, keep in mind, that's something, as we go on, that's a way to gradually move back if we're willing to give, if the board's willing to give these folks moving to the top of scale just a little bit more than everybody else. That's just one idea. Any questions there? These aren't recommendations, I'm just trying to help you understand. And then, of course, uh, back in oh-six, oh-seven, when we fixed the scale, when the division fixed it, it was based on thirty steps, career steps, and the, there was approximately nine hundred dollars between every step. All right, because that, but that cost a lot of money at that time because people were all over the place. So that's why we were trying to keep the integrity of year for year. So let's give a couple of examples here, one in particular. We're going to talk about a first-year teacher back in oh-eight and the salary the person made was thirty-eight, five, ninety-six back in oh-eight, oh-nine. The following year, zero percent raise. So now you have zero and one, making the exact same amount of money because no one's got any raises. We didn't reduce the entry level, we wanted to stay competitive. The following year, zeros, again, zero percent raise, these are actual numbers, by the way, zero percent raise, all three, now you got zero, one and two, that's compression.
So can I stop you?
Sure, sure.
So, so basically, those people didn't get the step? They didn't get the step?
So they didn't get a raise. What we did to keep track of them is we gave them, we put them on this. But you're right, we could have had that all in one, we, this could have been on the same line, zero, one, two. There, they, this is an experience.
They stayed stagnant because, because they did not get a step or whatever.
They didn't get a raise.
Right, they didn't get anything.
Yeah, and you're right, they didn't, they didn't get a step raise, they got a step experience, but it didn't matter because zero, one and two were all paid the same.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so let's stick with it here. Then in the following year, we got a half a percent raise, half a percent. So what we did, trying to make some differentiation, oh, keep in mind, next four years in a row are starting teachers, brand-new teachers, stayed exactly the same. What we did is we, this person got the point five and we varied these slightly, one and two, just a little bit. It, it's very minimal, but we were trying to differentiate between those years of service. And so that compression as we, oh, here's the other important part. We could have continued that concept, however, one, two, three, four, five years, who know, who remembers what happened? The VRS piece, we, we had to do like one point two-five. With these raises being minimal, what we decided to do with the, the one point, whatever it is coming out of their salaries and them getting hardly anything, ultimately, we gave, these are like cost of living adjustments, but across the board here. So everybody got the raise. Let's go back to this person here now, oh-eight, oh-nine. This person here, as of this time, like they're on step nine, is making seventy dollars more than an eight-year person and this eight-year person is making forty-six dollars more than a seven-year person. Keep in mind that, that, that they did get all those raises, but that compression followed all the way through.
Yeah.
Okay, you, you get that? So, uh, so ultimately, I can't emphasize this enough. You do the best you can with the money you have, um, and ultimately, so here's some things long-term, possibilities, there's more, I just want to throw a few out. Uh, to address compression, you provide a varied percentage adjustment for experience levels where compression exists, similar to what I showed you we did when we only had a point five. To stop the, the scale from creeping up, uh, because employees, uh, there are some employees say, we'll never get to the top with thirty-eight plus years' experience. Ultimately, you, you make the top to top and you give a cost of living adjustment to those at the top. Uh, you can reconstitute the scale, I mean, there's multiple ways to do this. One is we could just say, uh, for example, everybody, everybody above thirty is, uh, AB, uh, when division does that, above, or above, what did I say?
Above scale.
Above scale, kind of AB, I don't know what about that. Above scale. And then you could still, we could keep track of them, give them a COLA, then we could do steps, uh, but there's a, but ultimately, what we're looking for is some guidance with this at, at, uh, at some point. We really know how to do it if we know what it is that you wish. Um, I think, Judy, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know if you want to talk about this now, or like Judy's going to come in now, I just talked about salary scales, she's going to talk about other pe- pieces. Should we keep rolling or?
Yeah, I think so. I think as we get into the budget dialogue, it's probably a better time to have this conversation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. So going back to the school board's compensation philosophy, it does provide additional guidance for other types of compensation, specifically allowances and supplements. So allowances available to employees who, um, have achieved an additional educational or licensing credential outside of their, the ju, the requirements of their jobs and supplements are provided to eligible employees who are performing duties outside of their job description. Now, the one distinct difference between the two, they both add value to an employee's paycheck, obviously, but the one distinct difference is that allowances are subject to VRS and supplements are not. So the allowance would add to their retirement as well. So let's move on and look at our allowances. So as I mentioned, we provide educational allowances for a master's degree, master's plus thirty and a doctorate. And then this is just an example of some of the licenses, licenses and certifications that we do provide allowances for. But for the purpose of this presentation, we're going to take a look at our educational allowances. We do, uh, look at how much we are paying in comparison to other school divisions throughout our local area and as you can see, out of seven pay, out of seven schools, we tied for number six in Virginia Beach. And, uh, for the master's plus thirty, the EDS and the doctorate, we rank number seven. It's important to know also that Newport News and Hampton actually have the allowance embedded in their scales and what that means is that instead of having a bachelor's scale with the allowance on top of that, they have a bachelor's, a master's, a master's plus thirty and a doctorate scale. So, and moving forward on that, we want to talk to you about how this impacts a, our teacher scale and how it impacts our placement in the market. I'm bringing this back to show you that this is where we stand in the market for a bachelor's degree in terms of where our employees are. I want to remind everybody that fifty-two percent of our teachers have a master's degree and we haven't raised our master's degree allowances since nineteen ninety-six.
Wow.
So when you add in the value of an allowance for having a master's degree, you can see that we drop in the market. Instead of being at number five, when we ranked number one, we're now number four.
A quick question, is the master's degree situation such a high percentage used to be that you, I mean, I graduated with a, a degree to teach. Now, a lot of schools, you get a degree in education, or I mean, in English and then you get your ma, is that why the percentage is so high?
I would say yes.
So just the way the colleges are getting.
A lot of programs doing that fifth year where you can get a master's degree, but it's also low because at the same time, you, you've got, you know, a fair number of people coming before that and then also a lot of people who just get the endorsement and not the masters.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious, thank you. Thanks.
So that's where we stand in the market. So moving on to our additional duty supplements, this is given to our employees who either perform the duties of being a grade level chair, an athletic coach, or an extracurricular activity sponsor, like a newspaper sponsor or something of that nature. Um, several years ago, we had a committee meet to review our additional duty supplements and some of the recommendations that they provided to us, of course, was to increase our supplements to be competitive in the market. They also wanted to add supplements to our programs to, um, to address the changing needs of the schools and then to provide additional compensation for department chairs who actually work with less than three team members. Currently, the cutoff is three. If you have less than three, there is no additional compensation. So they wanted to be able to provide something to that employee who steps up to the plate to do that. We also provided a little bit, uh, glimpse of where we stand in the market for some of our athletic programs, like our varsity football, basketball and baseball, and you can see where we stand in the market in comparison to another school division. And moving back to our school board's compensation philosophy, it also provides that our compensation strategy should be flexible, uh, that a starting pay for our employees should be based on experience and educational attainment. And then our pay adjustments are allowed to address the equity, so you know what's coming up next. My favorite part, looking at internal equity adjustment. Over the years, we, the school board, have provided additional funding to help us to address our equity issues on our unified pay scale. And just to remind everybody, an internal equity adjustment is simply monetary difference needed to address a pay disparity between two employees or employees on the same pay rate with the same initial experience. And we've done this for now five years. We started out at eight point five million dollars in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and we've now been able to reduce that amount by almost seventy-six percent with the remaining twenty-four percent to be addressed on unified pay scale. Great progress. Um, and looking at that number of a little over two million dollars, we wanted to also show you, um, by employee group, the percentage of where that money is allocated towards and will be allocated towards. And you can see that the largest group is our classified employees, that's our cafeteria managers, our clerical support, and these are just examples, there are other classified employees, our custodians, our maintenance team over in school plan. In addition, we have a fifteen percent coming in for our specialists, such as our student activity coordinators, our school improvement specialists, our instructional specialists. And then we have fifteen percent of professionals, um, Ann mentioned some of those, our books on accounting back there, uh, our technology department, our transportation area supervisors. When they're looking at that classified amount, it was fifty-three percent. So we wanted to provide you with an additional breakdown for that as well. And as you can see, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is, um, marked towards our maintenance department, which would be our school plan, craftsman. And then professional support at two hundred and three thousand and technology at a hundred instead. So we just wanted to provide a fewer glance of what that fifty-three percent represented. Teacher assistants, those are the individuals who work side-by-side with the teacher to ensure that the instructional process continues in the classroom. We also like to look at where they stand in the market. We do have five pay rates for our placement of our teacher assistants, among the few school divisions who place their teacher assistants. So starting out of grade six for that general ed, um, teacher assistant at the high school at the dorm, up to grade ten for that special ed teacher assistant with a bachelor's degree. So in looking at where we stand in the lower grade, at, uh, grade six, you can see that we rank number five in the market. However, when you look at the highest pay rate, ten, we rank number one at fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents. So we will be coming back with a little suggestions for that. So we will be coming back with a little suggestions for that. Another group that we consider to be part of our talent pipeline is our substitute teachers. They also play an important role in the classroom. When that teacher can't be there, our substitute teachers are there to help and ensure that instructional process continues. So we like to look at that as well. We have six different pay types or tiers for our teacher assistants. We have the daily rate and we have a site-assigned substitute. And that's that substitute who starts the second week of September, the Monday, following the second week, in the second week of September. And they're there all year long. That's our site-assigned substitute. And then we have our long-term sub who starts on day 20. Last year, we started a new program, an online program for our substitutes, where they could go online and become, get a certificate. And we also added that as an additional tier. We do look at our substitutes in terms of being licensed and non-licensed. So when you look at them in the market, our teacher substitutes, like the licensed and non-licensed, we're pretty competitive. We rank number one. However, at that long-term rate, where the teacher is expected to take on the duties of that teacher, we rank number three. So we have a little work to do there, too. Benefits. In looking at our school board compensation philosophy, it also tells us that our benefit plans should be reviewed annually for competitive tests. I know in thinking about our benefit plans, we look at our employee healthcare costs for 2018. And these numbers are reflective of 2018. We're very fortunate that our healthcare costs have been held to our 2017 rates this year, 2018. And as you can see, for the BCPS, our, excuse me, an employee who can expect this $125 premium cost and the deductible will be $850. For the family plan, the employee will be expected to pay $788, which is also the 2017 rate. And the deductible will be $1,700. So that's where we stand. Budget, some budget considerations. And looking at some of the information that we shared tonight, we talked about our advanced degrees not being competitive. So we looked at where we could possibly go with that. And in order to make us competitive, it would cost us about $5.7 million. And I want to remind everybody, this is all included in the benefit cost as well. So on top of what you see, the benefit cost is already embedded in there. To complete our unified pay scale equity adjustments, it's a little over $2 million. And if we consider moving our teacher assistants to the minimum of grade 10, it would cost us $1.3 million. And that's just to get them to grade 10. If we were to, lack your name.
Thank you.
If we were to place the teacher assistants on grade 10 with full equity, in other words, they would be on grade 10, and place an alignment with employees with the same years of experience, it would cost us an additional $1.9 million. We also have on our teacher's scale certain positions that are defined by the state as teachers, and that is our school social workers, our school improvement specialists, our guidance department chairs, just to name a few. And to move those employees back to the teacher's scale, it will cost us an additional $1.3 million. We talked a little bit about additional duty supplements, that we want to be competitive in the market with those as well. So increase and revise some of those programs. It would be about $1.2 million. And then we talked about the long-term teacher sub rate. To move that up to $150 a day versus $124 a day, it will cost us an additional $239,000. Now, it says $13 million, but just like we implemented unified pay scale equity adjustments, many of these items can be done in an incremental fashion. So don't let that $13 million scare you.
Just for discussion purposes, could somebody make sure that we have a copy, a hard copy of that on paper, of that slide?
So what I would say is we can, and all of those costs are included in this unmet needs document.
Oh, okay. All right, okay.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
What would be helpful is to, the dollars and the estimated costs obviously reflect back onto the charts you had. If we could see the new numbers that those estimated costs would drive on those charts. Do you follow that? In other words, our pay would be different if you took that money and rolled it back into the comparison charts? If you could show us how, what those new numbers would be if you took that money and put it into the chart.
In other words, if we included the allowances and put that back into the pay scale and how we compared locally? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, exactly.
The financial.
Yeah, we could do that. Kind of like you could.
Ms. Wayne?
Okay, Judy, our site-assigned subs that get $99 a day, do they get benefits?
They become eligible for benefits as a part-time employee.
They do.
There's an hour threshold they have to cross.
Are you talking about the full-time?
The site-assigned.
The site-assigned.
$99. Okay, and the long-term sub that is $124, maybe $150, do they get health insurance?
It depends on how many hours they work in that year. A long-term sub could be there for 21 days. It just depends on how many hours they work.
And then teacher assistants, they do?
As long as they're in the allocated position, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I want to keep adding on to Ms. Wayne's question. And that was, is the long-term sub, is it cumulative? You do 21 days here, you do 30 days here. Do you pile that all together or is it treated as an individual?
I'm going to defer that to Ann.
I have a substitute option. It is 21, the 21 consecutive days for that particular assignment. Typically, what happens is it will get extended depending on what employee relation tells us about their review. So if they go to a new site or a new position, it'll start again 20 consecutive days. It's a new job. How long, at what point, when there is a person serving as a long-term substitute, do you make that decision? I mean, we're at 60 days or 90 days or to continue. At what point do you actually turn around and hire that person? Or could they do the entire year as a long-term sub? That is an ER.
It also depends on what leave the employee's on that they're being.
I understand.
You know, so if they're on leave, that they're eligible for leave currently, with some of the regulations that are in effect now, they could be on leave for up to two years. Many of them can be on leave for up to a year. So we wouldn't hire them because we're holding a position during that time. And until we know that that employee's not coming back, we wouldn't really be able to hire for that position.
For that reason, it's worth going and increasing their daily rate just knowing they could be stuck in limbo for two years. But I will say that as a person who did lots of long-term staffing, that was the way you got yourself known. That was, so it's worthwhile, the practical experience.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
I just want to say something about the long-term sub piece. If we know they're going to be out for a good part of the year, we would hire, we would hire a teacher on a TE, temporary employment agreement in that slot. It all depends on the length of the vacancy, the time of the year.
Well, especially knowing you're going to have a good number of vacancies at the end of the year.
Right.
That would make sense to do that, keep someone good.
Mr. Edwards?
Probably flows into the workshop on budget, but the definition of guaranteed revenue stream that was highlighted on those charts is something we probably need to talk about. Not necessarily now.
Right. If there's no objection, the pre-budget discussion, I think, is probably going to be, we're going to take some time with it. And the facilities update, which is D for Thurgood Elementary, the person that's going to talk with us on that is going to come later. We already had planned on that person coming afterwards. So what I'd like to do now is go ahead and go into close for the real property because we need to take care of that before the formal meeting. And then so that we have plenty of time for this pre-budget discussion, I'd like to either, if we have time to go get into it, we can always finish it later. But I don't want to shorten the pre-budget. I know we have lots of questions and lots of things we want to bring up. So if there's no objection, I'd like to go into close now for the real property. Is that okay with everyone? And then we'll finish up our workshop agenda after the formal meeting. So, Mr. Edwards? Yes. We want to try to do both close now, yes, yes, yes.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt a motion to recess into a closed meeting pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 3 and 7 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for A consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding the specific matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or consulted on a matter pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8, namely to discuss terms and obligations related to renewal of a contract. Is this the one I'm supposed to read?
Do you need to read all of this?
I am, but I'm missing the real property piece of this.
Maybe not. You have to read this, too.
Part B, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including reviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where such discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29, namely to discuss the terms and obligations related to renewal of a contract. A, real property?
That's what you were.
Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held property where such, or a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, namely to discuss disposition of school board-owned property in McHemphill District. B, legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by such staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, or such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the board or consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the board regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, namely to discuss disposition of school board-owned property in McHemphill District.
Motion's made to go into close. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been, motion's in seconded, all in favor, please raise your hand.
I'm going to sit at chairs right now.
All opposed? Okay, we are in close.